Or do you have something written up?
No, I don't, I, other than what I had already sent over with the action request.
Okay, we'll just give it back to them.
But talk about Lisa, we couldn't do anything before fifteen days and you can't do anything past thirty days, so we had just kind of this tight little window to do this appointment, so.
Do we have to ask people to submit letters?
Yeah, so that's what we'll be doing tonight. So on, in your packet here tonight, on the last item, it has the breakdown of what we're supposed to do, yeah, not council action.
Oh, there it is.
You're lying.
Oh, thank you. All right. Good evening, we'd like to welcome everybody to the Holbrook City Council Special Meeting for July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. For roll call, we have everybody in attendance as Councilwoman Wood tendered her resignation at the last meeting. So, just begin with, we will open up for a public hearings, we'll make a motion in a second to open a public hearing for the proposed newer and increased rate fees and charges. So, um, open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to open the floor for a public hearing for the proposed new or increased rates, fees, and charges.
I'll second it.
First and a second, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it does not appear that anybody is here to, there's nobody here, so. To speak on it. I don't know if he gives thirty seconds or not if they're coming, but I doubt it, so. All right, since we have nobody in the audience here to speak on behalf of any of the proposals, we'll open the floor for a motion to close out the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, item number four, so we've got, um, twelve, fourteen, we counted earlier.
Yeah, I think there's thirteen resolutions in one ordinance.
There you go, so we have a few. So, a lot of these, we're gonna be going through all these different resolutions, but as a reminder to the audience that may be listening, um, we've had multiple work sessions on these and discussions, and we've had a, the proposed binder out front for anybody to look at as well. So we will start with A, resolution, resolution twenty-five dash ten. Um, I will be reading these by heading only. If any council member requests that we read it in full, I will oblige, but we will read for now by heading, so.
Are we gonna vote on each one after you read it, or?
We'll have a discussion, yeah. So, I'll read it, then we'll have a discussion, and then we'll take a vote, it'll be a roll call.
Okay. Huge individuality.
All right, resolution twenty-five dash ten, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending implementing the fees for fax services. I'll just read section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected per page for fax services, A, the fee of one dollar per page. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, discussion on this item?
Does anybody send fax as an inwork?
Yes, um, this is for fax is being done here at the city hall.
Correct.
Okay.
Not, not a whole lot of people do, but they're coming here for it because we're really the only ones that they are caring.
I would assume this goes to the library, does the library even do fax or is this?
Not anymore.
Okay, so it's, it's just city hall, good question.
Just to clarify.
Nope, appreciate it, so. All right. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash ten.
I'll second that.
And we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. All right, item B, resolution twenty-five dash eleven, by heading, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending implementing fees for the building department permit fees. As a reminder, we did a work session specifically on this, and we spoke with, uh, planning and zoning, we had a lot of discussion back and forth. I do want to make everybody aware of item number L, we talked about this at the last week's meeting, that is the fee for a city business license for thirty-five dollars annually. Um, so the recommendation from last week was that we would omit this from the permitted fees until we had more discussion on the actual business license. So if that's something we still wanna do, we need to make sure that's part of the motion to omit it, so. Does anybody have?
Omit it?
Omit it, yeah, well, omit it, oh. Does anybody have any other questions, concerns, or discussion regarding anything else on here, or even that item?
Can you, for the public, read section one of the fees that will be implemented?
Yes, I can do that, thank you, so. All right, section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected for building department permits, A, the fee for a gas permit is fifty dollars, inspection included. B, the fee for an electric permit is fifty dollars, inspection included. C, the fee for a permit renewal every six months prior to expiration is twenty dollars. D, the fee for a permit reactivate, reactivis, reactivation, if permit is expired, is ten percent of the original fee. E, the fee for a plan review, fee will be credited back toward permit purchase is one hundred dollars. F, the fee for a certificate of occupancy for a new residential commercial is fifty dollars. G, the fee for an inspection, if no fee is specifically indicated, is seventy-five dollars. H, the fee for a reinspection is seventy-five dollars per reinspection. I, the fee for a residential commercial fence permit is twenty-five dollars. J, the fee for a commercial sign permit is fifty dollars plus one dollar and fifty cents per square foot, includes two inspections, existing signs have a one-year waiver. K, the fee for a gas line inspection for insulation is fifty dollars. L is the fee for a city business license for, is thirty-five dollars annually. On the back page, M, the fee for special emergency inspections on Fridays, minimum one hour charge, seventy-five dollars per hour, and the fee for a panel upgrade inspection is seventy-five dollars. Do you have any questions, concerns, discussion? Okay, hearing none, all open the floor for a motion.
I'm over that we approve resolution twenty-five dash eleven, omitting the fee for a city business license of thirty-five dollars annually until that's voted on with, with this in our next council meeting.
I'll second that.
All right. Does anybody have any discussion?
Arsenia.
Arsenia. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Um, councilmember Black.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Item C, resolution twenty-five dash twelve, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending fees for the planning and zoning department. I'll go ahead and read section one as well, the following fee shall be charged and collected for planning and zoning department permits, A, the fee for a zone change is two hundred and fifty dollars. B, the fee for a conditional use permit is a hundred and fifty dollars, C, the fee for a variance permit is two hundred and fifty dollars. Do we have any questions, concerns, discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twelve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Thank you. Item D. Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending fees for facility rental utilities. We'll read section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected for said facility rental utilities services, A, fitness center, the membership fee is twenty dollars per month. B, fitness center, the fee for a daily pass, one-time user fee is ten dollars per day. C, Gillespie Park electricity, the fee for vendors slash others is twenty dollars per day. D, Gillespie Park electricity, the fee for nonprofits is five dollars per day. Any questions, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirteen.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Item E, resolution twenty-five dash fourteen, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending implementing fees for the golf course. Uh, we did, for the benefit of the, uh, citizens, we did sit down with, um, the men's golf association, and, um, they too were happy, and they made suggestions along with these, um, what is being proposed tonight. So, section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected for said golf course services. A, the fee for the rental of the cart barn is fifty dollars per month. B, the rental fee for a golf cart for nine holes is fifteen dollars. C, the rental fee for a golf cart for eighteen holes is twenty dollars. D, the fee to golf nine holes is fifteen dollars, cart not included. E, the fee to golf eighteen holes is twenty-five dollars, cart not included. F, the fee for single monthly green fees is seventy dollars. G, the fee for the senior monthly green fees is sixty dollars. H, the fee for the family monthly green fees is a hundred and ten dollars. I, the fee for single yearly green fees is seven hundred dollars. J, the fee for senior yearly green fees is six hundred dollars. K, the fee for family yearly green fees is one thousand one hundred dollars. L, the fee to play disc golf is ten dollars per round for eighteen goals. M, the fee to use a personal golf cart on the trails is five dollars per round. Any questions, concerns, discussion?
And do we have somebody out there that's gonna be enforcing these fees?
We do.
We do?
Well, we will be, we have the position open.
Okay.
We have, we have seasonal right now, but we're with the implementing these fees, we did budget a little bit extra to have a full time there for, for all year.
So there won't be the honor system anymore, will it?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Did you have a question or comment?
I just wanted to clarify, didn't even, Terry asked, she, he did.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash fourteen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Thank you, motion passes. Item F, resolution twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending implementing fees for the swimming pool. Section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected said, said swimming pool services. A, the daily fee for a child under the age of five years is two dollars. B, the daily fee for a child aged six to seventeen years is three dollars. The daily fee for an adult aged eighteen to sixty-one years is four dollars. The daily fee for a senior aged sixty-two plus is three dollars. E, the fee for a swim pass for a child aged zero to seventeen is fifty-five dollars for forty swims. F, the fee for a swim pass for an adult aged eighteen to sixty-one is ninety dollars for forty swims. G, the fee for a season pass for a family of three is a hundred and forty-five dollars. H, the fee for a season pass with a family of four is a hundred and seventy-five dollars. I, the fee for a season pass for a family of five is two hundred and ten dollars. J, the wa, the fee for water aerobics is twenty dollars per month. K, the fee for swim lessons is twenty dollars per class for ten sessions. L, the hourly rental fee for the swimming pool is eighty-five dollars per hour, this includes two lifeguards, up to forty-four people. For forty-five to seventy people, three lifeguards are needed, for seventy-one plus people, four lifeguards are needed. And the hourly fee for each additional lifeguard is twenty dollars per hour, and the fee for the cleaning deposit is seventy-five dollars, this is refundable if all areas are cleaned. And that is it, so. Any questions, concerns, comments?
So the fee for water aerobics, does that money come to the city, or is that for the instructor, or?
No, it comes to us.
Okay, so the instructor does it for nothing?
Yeah, as far as I know, Seth, Sethi is doing it for nothing.
Okay. And so the hourly rental fee for the swimming pool, so can they rent that for however long they want? The swimming pool, I mean, not when there's regular swimming going on, but like by thirty to eleven or whatever?
Yeah, um, we try not to push it past ten o'clock, so it's, so there's usually like a five to ten, so four hours is usually the typical right time.
Okay.
Another, when we've done it for the church, it's been like seven to nine, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty-five fifteen.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black.
Aye.
Count, Vice Mayor Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes. Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending fees for utility fees, water. Section one reads, the following fee shall be charged and collected for said utility fees, water services. A, the fee for the utility deposit residential account is two hundred and fifty dollars. They came and reminded us that if somebody defaults, that usually the original a hundred and fifty dollars was not enough to, to cover what was owed, so thus the increase.
Is, is it refundable?
Yes.
It is refundable.
Is it after a year?
Well, we currently don't do it after a year, uh, but if they do close their account, move on, then we refund it.
So if somebody moved away?
Yeah.
What if that person dies?
Same thing, well, if they close an account and they have a deposit on file, we will refund it.
But if that person is deceased?
But it, it'll, it'll go to whoever the, the caretaker is or authority.
Let's say I died and my, my, towards my bill?
It'll go towards your bill, and then whatever's left, we refund it, so at that point, it'll go to whoever is the caretaker or the, the right of attorney.
And we don't automatically refund it after a year, but if they have good credit history and they come and request it, we will, we will do it then.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they have good credit history.
And if they die, our city, they really don't care.
Well, that's, I mean, if it's my money, I want it to go somewhere, so.
We, we do get, um, power of attorney, uh, customers that come in when they do, put some, uh, relative closed or dies, and they need to close their account. We will refund, close their account, and then refund the, the rest or whatever is needed.
Do you have a comment or question?
Is this just for residential, what about commercial, like business?
Commercial is currently five hundred, when we spoke about that. Um, we try to do the average, um, of three months, because it takes three months before you get on the shut-off list, and if we shut you off, we wanna have that deposit cover the potential amount due, and when we discussed it, um, that, most of the time, that, um, deposit still covered the commercial account, so we didn't need to, feel like we needed to raise that.
Okay.
Good questions? Any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash sixteen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Nielsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes. Item H, twenty-five seventeen, resolution twenty-five dash seventeen, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending implementing fees for the transfer station. Section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected for said transfer station services. A, the fee without a residential account for construction debris is forty-eight dollars per cubic yard. B, the fee without a residential account for white goods, refrigerator is twenty dollars per item. C, the fee without a residential account for white goods, washer dryer stove heater is ten dollars per item. D, the fee for special waste demos, wildcat dumping, et cetera, for residential accounts is five hundred dollars per hour. E, the fee for special waste demos, wildcat dumping, et cetera, without a residential account is a thousand per hour. F, the fee for rental of a twenty-yard roll-off for residential and commercial green waste is two hundred dollars for one week or one dump, whichever comes first. G, the fee for rental of a ten-yard roll-off for residential and commercial green waste is one, one hundred dollars for one week or one dump, whichever comes first. H, prohibited materials, asphalt, brick, concrete, dirt, rock, tires, hazardous waste, paint, and solvent. There's everything on there, so. Randy, can you remind me how much is in a perched cubic foot in a regular, like, Ford F-150?
So, that, that, it, it's a, it depends on, on how tall and wide, wide the vehicles are, so. Uh, if you have a short bed, you're gonna calculate it differently than a long bed, so i- it's kind of a judgment in a way.
So I'm almost gonna, not to keep this longer tonight, but I kinda, I'm, I'm talking for the contractors in town, because like I had a dumpster for a while, but we got rid of it. I have just some shavings of asphalt, but, not asphalt, of, um, insulation. Once it goes into dumpster, it will flatten down pretty good, but right now, if I take it to the dump, it's gonna fill up my whole truck. So it could ta, cost me a hundred bucks just to get rid of some stuff that's literally gonna crumble down to nothing. And it's gonna make me wanna not go dump it for a hundred dollars, I'm gonna go put it in my residential waste bucket for the next four weeks to get rid of it, right? So.
There are people who do that right now.
Exactly. So, I just think at forty-eight dollars, I think that's a little steep. I was asking Lisa before the meeting, and I apologize for not coming, talking to you guys sooner about it, um.
So a cubic yard is twenty-seven square feet, right?
But the problem is, it's still subjective to the guy at the transfer station eyeballing your, your load, and that's the tricky part, and so.
It's in the bag.
This isn't a bag. They're like.
A truck is five by eight by a foot and a half, right?
Right.
So five by eight, that's forty, that's eighty, and so it's about two cubic yards.
But then, then you gotta estimate how tall it is too, 'cause a lot of people.
Like I said, mine's just kinda fluffy right now, so I'm gonna still pay the same as somebody that's gonna cram pack it in there.
Yeah.
So, I might wanna go chop, pay a hundred bucks, and for me, it's for a, a nonprofit we're doing, right, so I'm trying to save as much money as I can, so this is for the teen center we're doing, I'm like, that hundred bucks could go towards some type of services, so, yeah, I'm looking for, you know, selfish reasons a bit. So we were jumping, right now, it's currently at thirty-seven dollars. So, my recommendation is almost leave it at the thirty-seven, it's like, I'll pay seventy-two, then I wanna be a hundred.
We passed it, if everybody's water bill went up.
So this is for non-residential, so, all of these fees right here are for, um, for non-residential, for construction workers or commercial.
People that aren't residents.
That's the thing, I am a resident here.
What if you're a resident here and you have a business?
But that's what you're saying, if you're doing a business, if you're doing it on your business account, then we're gonna charge you, so.
So yeah, so that's my point. So I don't wanna just, it's like, we did a good thing, I think, for the residents, to say, hey, we wanna encourage the, the dumping and things like that. So I don't, I know I'm not the only contractor in town that's like, ugh, that's just gonna hurt, I mean, that's just another eleven dollars, but really, that's another twenty-plus dollars every. Truckload, go ahead, Arsenia, go ahead, Terry, thank you.
So could we just not, could, we can just not put a certain amount and not do by cubic yard, since it's, you're gonna have different people estimating that cubic yardage?
Well then you're gonna have people that complain about, like, the little tiny truck versus the big truck versus the trailer, right?
How about this idea, we're charging all of the residents two fifty, how about if we charge all of the businesses five dollars a month, or ten dollars? Or look at it again, let's say if, it was five dollars a month, that'd be sixty dollars a year.
How would that look on our books?
Construction degree though is heavy, that doesn't work.
Because you're gonna have these big companies that are going to get loads of inventory in, and next thing you know, have an entire semi truck full of stuff for thirty bucks.
And that's the unfortunate part, you know, and I could be outruled today, and I'm totally good with that too, I'm just gonna stick it, so.
But that also brings up the idea of, like, say I want, I buy a building, like, whatever building's for sale, and it's gonna need a lot of remodeling, a lot of construction to be done for, and if, I'm not gonna want to buy this building and do anything with it, 'cause it's gonna cost me two thousand dollars to clean up the first place.
Oh, it'll cost you more than that, one dumpster is four hundred dollars, what is it, Randy, for a, or twenty yarders right now?
Yeah.
Like four hundred, four fifty?
Four twenty-eight or something.
You know, so that teen center, we filled up three of them, you know, I mean, that's fifteen hundred bucks.
So what, what, if it comes to construction debris, why don't you do it by load?
That's what you were adding.
Yeah, like load, not necessarily truck.
Yeah.
So, so if you guys wanna table, table that item, maybe we could come up with some prices on a small truck, regular truck, and a long truck.
I think I like that better.
Yeah, we should do it by the truck size.
Or, or, or if you guys wanna talk about it right now, twenty bucks for a small truck, thirty bucks for a regular truck, and forty-four, uh, forty-four a long bed.
But she has, she has a point, right?
Like a flat bed.
The fiberglass is gonna compress.
Yeah.
But I'm still okay with that, that's still gonna save me a heck of a lot more than this, this is literally, I looked at it, and I'm like, it's gonna cost me a hundred bucks to go dump that stupid thing today.
I think we should table.
And then we take all of the guessing out of it, if you come with a little tiny.
Then I'll go squish it myself, right?
Truck like a Toyota or S-ten or something, it's twenty bucks.
I like that idea of by load, by, I mean, not even truck size, like, a long bed versus a standard size bed, if you have a small truck, you better pack it in there as much as you can.
Yeah.
Or like a little trailer, like the.
So a six-foot bed?
That'd be an easy compromise, but most trucks are regular beds, you could look at the regular beds pretty easy.
If you have a standard and you know what your long bed.
So should we, um, table the whole thing?
Let's table, so we could move on.
I like it.
If you, just to let you know, if you table the whole thing, we'll have to do another intent to, um, for all these fees.
Okay, so let's not do that, so let's, um, let's just omit A for now? Can we just omit A again and then bring A back, so A would just maintain the same right now as it is, until we come back and make that modification, but then we wouldn't have to do the intent.
That'll work, I, I, and I do have another notice of attendance emailed you and Kathleen, that will plan.
Just do it right now?
I say we just hash it out.
You know what, Arsenia, I like it, let's do it, let's just hash it out.
You have your standard sized truck, you have your long bed truck.
And you have your small.
And you have a flat bed.
Or, yeah, but don't worry, just your trailer.
So if you have a small trailer or a flat bed trailer, that's gonna go under trailer.
What, what are you gonna do?
You guys like that twenty, thirty, forty idea?
Even with the bed, or you're cab high on the bed.
That's the same, no.
It's so low, if it's level.
You say if it's high or not, I say it doesn't matter how high you go.
Yeah, 'cause you still have to strap it in when you're driving, and you can get a ticket.
Okay, so, but they have a, a truck bed full, and then they have a flat bed, so they're gonna get charged for both.
Two.
Correct.
Say your standard size is your regular short bed, I mean, they don't really have little miniature, like, S-ten trucks real, I mean, there's not that many around.
Unless you have a little Toyota Tacoma. Unless you have a Toyota Tacoma or something like that, that'd be.
But you know what?
Yeah, I would say that that would be a small bed, twenty bucks, a regular size, standard, four by four by eight or whatever would be the thirty, and then, uh, the extended long, longer, um, beds would be the forty.
And then a trailer.
That I would recommend, and then a trailer, probably forty as well.
I would do a trailer more, I'd do a trailer fifty.
I'd say a trailer fifty, yeah.
'Cause they're still saving money.
And then you could pack that in a heck of a lot more, yeah.
So.
So all trailers fifty.
Small bed twenty, regular truck thirty, long bed forty, and trailers fifty.
How y'all feel about that?
When you say a small truck, like a S-ten.
Yeah, S-ten, Tacoma, some of those newer, those newer Mavericks, or those Ridge, Ridge Lines, those are smaller beds.
And a standard size is like a, what, fifty?
Ridge Line.
We, we have to pay by the cubic yard when they haul it out, right?
No, we pay by the weight, but that's the problem, the only way we're gonna be able to, you're not gonna ever ta, talk apples to oranges unless we get a scale over there and scale each truck, and then estimate what a truck weighs, minus what they have in the load.
Yeah, we'd have to get a scale.
Weight in and out.
Right, we'd have to weigh it in and out or something like that.
And we also raise the fees, so we have fees to cover.
But what I'm saying is, you're back to the thing where if you have insulation in there, it doesn't weigh anything, and it doesn't cost us that much to ship it back out.
Yeah, you're not gonna.
But it evens out, for those people that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm telling you, from a contractor, I'm okay taking that, because in the end, it's gonna still save me money, 'cause the next time, I'm gonna pack it, so.
You're right, you're, you'll never get apples to, apples, apples on it.
All right, is everybody comfortable?
And, and the only way we know when we haul those off is, they, when we take them to the landfill, they weigh them before they dump them at the landfill, and that's how we.
And we find out, we're, you know, losing money.
I, I'm all for just keeping it simpler, just because that way, you know, we're not gonna, it's easier for the guys to.
Exactly.
Or whoever's working.
I think it's just more fair, so. I like it, okay.
We said, it was twenty for a small bed.
Thirty for a regular.
Thirty for the, a regular size, uh, forty for a long bed, and fifty for a flat bed.
And we said flat bed, it needs to be a trailer.
Or trailer.
Or a trailer, so you better use your big one, if you're going.
Should we charge more for the trailer?
No, no, because I mean, if you have a small trailer, I mean, it can still get up there.
That's true. That's true, I'm good, so.
Yeah, how many axles are on your trailer, right?
I guess we can always come back.
Forty dollars for a single axle, fifty for a double axle, I don't know, I mean, we could get out of control.
Yeah, let's just stick with the, so, I like it. Okay, any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash seventeen with the changes to A, being a small bed truck twenty dollars, a regular size thirty, a long bed forty, and fifty dollars for a flat bed, just a trailer, a trailer.
All right, so we have a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black.
Know about that one. Nay.
Um, Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Why, why did you vote no before?
Because I still think there's a whole heck of a lot of difference in what you're putting in there and how much we're gonna end up paying at the dump, and there's no way of knowing that, right?
Randy, in about six months, can we do an evaluation of where we're at on transfer fees?
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if you fill that with lumber, it's gonna be a whole heck of a lot more, way more than you fill with insulation.
Uh, is it lumber that's either green waste that can burn?
Yeah, those are green waste.
Green waste.
I just, I figure the lumber in the cities are gonna end up paying more than they're getting for it.
But lumber, it goes to green waste.
Not if they haul it to the dump.
Then, then isn't that when they tell them to take it to green waste?
Well, how about if you, you've taken rolled roofing off or something, right?
So you still can't do some of those. We still have the, the.
Prohibited materials.
H, prohibited materials, asphalt, brick, concrete, dirt, rock, tires, hazardous waste, paint, and solvent. So those are still prohibited.
But, but he, but he's right, right? If there's, so, could we, could we have the stipulation that we review this in six months? I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
So, with that stipulation, I'm like, yay.
Okay, thank you.
I, you said?
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. All right, we'll put that on our calendar, August, September, October, November, December, January. So come January, February, Randy, we'll go ahead and reevaluate that. All right, thank you, motion passes. All right, Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending and implementing fees for the cemetery. Section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected for said cemetery services. A, the fee for a standard grave space, five by ten, resident in city plus ten miles, is six hundred dollars. B, the fee for a standard grave space, five by ten, out of city plus ten miles, but within Navajo County, is one thousand two hundred dollars. C, the fee for a standard grave space, five by ten, for non-residential outside of Navajo County, is two thousand four hundred dollars. D, the fee for a quarter grave urn burial, residential in city plus ten miles, is two hundred fifty dollars. E, the fee for a quarter grave urn burial out of city plus ten miles, but within Navajo County, is four hundred fifty dollars. F, the fee for a quarter grave urn burial, non-residential outside of Navajo County, is eight hundred fifty dollars. G, the fee for a half grave infant or urn burial, residential in city plus ten miles, is four hundred dollars. H, the fee for a half a grave infant or urn burial out of city plus ten miles, but within Navajo County, is eight hundred dollars. I, the fee for a half grave infant or urn burial, non-residential outside of Navajo County, is fourteen hundred dollars. J, the fee for opening and closing a standard grave is two hundred fifty dollars. K, the fee for opening and closing a quarter or half grave is two hundred fifty dollars. L, the additional fee of opening and closing on a weekend or holiday is a hundred fifty dollars. M, the fee for a crypt in the mausoleum, residential in city plus ten miles, is six hundred fifty dollars. N, the fee for a crypt in the mausoleum out of city plus ten miles, but within Navajo County, is eight hundred fifty dollars. O, the fee for a crypt in the mausoleum, non-residential outside of Navajo County, is one thousand one hundred dollars. P, the fee for opening and closing a crypt in the mausoleum is a hundred fifty dollars. Q, the additional fee for opening and closing a crypt in the mausoleum on a weekend or holiday is a hundred fifty dollars. R, the fee for an exclamation is nine hundred dollars. S, the fee for setting a flat single headstone is a hundred fifty dollars. T, the fee for setting a flat double headstone is two hundred dollars. U, the fee for setting an upright single headstone is two hundred fifty dollars. V, the fee for setting an upright double headstone is three hundred fifty dollars. W, the fee for a veteran grave space, five by ten, includes opening and closing residential in city plus ten miles, is seven hundred fifty dollars. The fee for a veteran grave space, five by ten, includes opening and closing out of city plus ten miles, but within Navajo County, is one thousand dollars. Y, the fee for a veteran grave space, five by ten, includes opening and closing, non-residential outside of Navajo County, is eighteen hundred dollars.
I, I have.
That was a big one.
Yes.
That was.
Will we open up for discussion?
Yes.
I have a question. Do we double stack? I know that I recently buried my, my dad, and in that particular cemetery, it's, it's closed up, it's confined. And now they double stacked. Does that happen here?
We, we do not double stack, or do you want?
Okay.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So we don't, right now?
We do not double stack. We do allow up to four urns on top of a casket, but not double caskets.
Okay, okay, I just, that was my question.
Speaking from experience, we've got two urns on one of my parents.
But if we came to the position where our cemetery is at capacity, then what are you, what are we gonna do? Like.
We need, we need to purchase, or we need to, I'm sorry, get, you get.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we have room behind that, the little lake field, that we're gonna extend the block.
They have room behind it. Yeah, I want a clear view of center field. Do we still have room in the mausoleum?
So, as if these increased fees are, the fees are going to do, go where? Like, if we're increasing the fees, is it going to help maintain the cemetery for maintenance purposes?
Yeah, it, it'll go, it goes into the general fund. Right now, we're gonna be, it's gonna be, we're talking a lot of money to get, to extend that cemetery out farther, so that's what these fees are gonna help. And, and it'll help slow, uh, outside residents coming in here and, and buying up all the, all the plots.
Do we have room in the mausoleum still?
There, there are, I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but probably about ten, eight to ten left.
How, how much do, how much does it cost to build another mausoleum to put?
I have no idea.
Because, I mean, that's gotta be, that's saving space, that's stacking.
That's helping, thinking on praise.
Honestly, it, I've been working with the cemetery, um, probably for the last seven years, and I've sold maybe five mausoleum spaces. They're not real popular.
Good to know. So this, so these fees will go a lot of for the expansion. Like you said, the city does own land right now.
Now, you just said that.
Flex up.
We did do a expansion that was supposed to last as long as it is, and we were filling up that, that first expansion quicker than we had hoped, and so.
Covid.
And the cheaper prices, so.
So what are they right now?
Yeah.
Right now, what are the?
And they're right here in our.
They're not in there.
Oh, they're not?
No, um, let me go grab.
So can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
So for setting the headstones, that's if the city sets those, right?
Yeah, correct.
But I could, I could, my kids could set a headstone, correct, and if there would not be a charge for that.
Yeah. Right, and we have a, a, a frame that we use and stuff like that, so usually if a family wants to do it, Sean can help them set up a frame, and then they finish it themselves.
Okay. Now, I know, I mean, I'm all for increasing prices, but if we're gonna increase these prices, then we need to keep up our cemetery.
I agree.
It's, I mean, there are so many headstones that you can't even see over there. I mean, you can see this much. Pretty soon, the grass is gonna be over those, and you won't even be able to tell who's buried there unless you come in and say where so-and-so is. And there's so many alumni that don't, don't live here anymore, but their parents are still buried here, and, you know, they don't get back over here to take care of it, but, and the veterans' headstones, so many of them are crooked and broken, and it's, it's just a shame. So, I'm all for increasing prices, but we need to take care of the cemetery.
So where I buried my dad, I bought, we bought perpetual care, where somebody mows over, and, and so he's got a cement thing about four feet wide, then there's a headstone above it, but they mow up into that, and they perpetual care, and then they give us a, a thing, it was right before Memorial Day. They said, uh, uh, please take all your flowers and whatnot, because they were gonna do that. Do we, do we offer anything like that?
Yeah, we do.
What, um, is, is it on, is it in here?
Memorial Day and Veterans Day are the days that.
Yeah, the perpetual care thing.
And I think we need to let, get that word out. I mean, the first time that it was done this year, I had so many people call that they were so upset, because they didn't, no, they don't get on Facebook, they don't read, get the newspaper.
Yeah, that's, that's not really, that's different than the fees that we're doing, and we have talked about that before.
Right, so we can't really get into it.
Yeah.
So.
But the thing with the care, and when these fees are done on the weekends, who is it that, how are the graves dug? Are they, are they dug by a backhoe?
Yeah, I, it, and excavator, we have an excavator right now.
By trained personnel?
Yeah.
I haven't heard this. Okay, so for the fees though, for tonight, so, yeah, so we can have a discussion. I've had people wanna create like a cemetery committee, things like that, so we can discuss that. So, knowing as we're voting on this, if we're voting a, an eye on this, then we're saying at the same time, we expect a certain level of care to go with it, correct?
But it needs to be actually put in there, cause it's like, well, it doesn't say that we have to take care of it.
And then, but part of it, like we said, part of these fees will be going to the expansion as well, and then, like we said, to slow down the non-residents.
So we do have cemetery rules that we could do, that's something we can address later, right?
Yeah, so let's do that, yeah.
If you guys wanted to.
Yeah, feel free to note it down.
This is just, it's only the fees, right?
Perfect. All right.
I think this would be a dead issue.
He's been waiting.
But I think some of those cemetery rules, we really do need to look, because some time ago, I think it gets over that.
All right. And we, yeah, and we'll do that.
I think we're getting into dead end.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, we do have a list of rules that we give everybody when they.
Okay, so for the fees, so let's get back on track with the fees here. Um, does anybody have any questions, concerns, or discussion about the fees?
Let's not beat a dead horse.
Yeah, she's on a roll now, so. All right, with that, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash eighteen.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing then, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. All right, item J, Resolution twenty-five dash nineteen, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending and implementing fees for the library. Section eight, or section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected for said library services. A, the fee for replacement cost varies on actual cost to purchase item plus a ten dollar processing fee. B, the fee for renting the library meeting room is thirty-five dollars for four hours, or a hundred fifty dollars for eight hours. Now, if you remember this conversation about, cause we had modified that to say the actual cost of the item plus the ten dollars. So, does anybody have any questions, concerns, discussion? Hearing then, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I move that we accept Resolution twenty-five dash nineteen.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes. Item K, Resolution twenty-five dash twenty, a resolution of the mayor and the council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending and implementing fees for the magistrate court. Section one, the following fee shall be charged and collected for said magistrate court services. A, the fee for magistrate user and staffing fee is forty-five dollars. Anybody have any questions, concern, discussion on that? Hearing then, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty.
You have a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion or any discussion? All right, hearing then, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook City, Navajo County, Arizona, amending and implementing fees for the animal shelter. I think we had a couple work sessions on this one, so. The following fee shall be charged and collected for said animal shelter services. A, kennel permit, non-commercial A and non-commercial B, cost of individual pet license. B, kennel permit, commercial, cost of individual pet license. C, the late fee for a non-commercial A and non-commercial B permit is ten dollars past thirty days. D, the late fee for a commercial permit is ten dollars past thirty days. E, the late fee for a canine hybrids permit is ten dollars past thirty days. F, the fee for a non-commercial reinspection is ten dollars. G, the fee for a commercial reinspection is fifty dollars. H, the fee for hybrid canine reinspection is twenty-five dollars. I, the fee for a street vendor, animal vendor is a hundred, sorry, is fifteen dollars per day. J, the fee for pet disposal is seventy-five dollars for the first seventy-five pounds, and twenty-five dollars for every seventy-five pounds after. K, the fee for a microchip is twenty dollars. L, the fee for a rabies shot, owner reclaim is fifteen dollars. M, the fee for an, an owner surrender or disposal pickup is an additional twenty-five dollars. Any questions, concern, discussion?
I, I, what, what does that mean, a street vendor?
They're selling them like it, how I got one of my dogs at Safeway.
Like it.
At Safeway or.
Oh, they're selling them in front of the, the tractor spot, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the clarification.
It's not impulse item.
My mom gave away many a cat.
And so they give the rabies shots at the shelter?
Or you can go to a, Abby.
I think you have to get a, a vet appointment.
Right.
Yeah, right, right now, um, Brandon is, um, certified to, to give the shots.
Give rabies shots. Okay, but all the other ones, they would have to go to the vet?
Right.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing then, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-one.
You have a second? You have a second, Vice Mayor Nielsen? All right, any further discussion, questions? Hearing then, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes. All right, item number five, Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two. I'll go ahead and read the background and discussion on this one. This is in regard to the twenty twenty-four Navajo County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Navajo County received approval from FEMA on adopting the Navajo County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This was previously adopted by council, but they had some revisions to the plan, so FEMA had revisions to the plan. FEMA has recommended to re-adopt the plan. So you had attached with your, um, we have the actual resolution, but you also had, um, a lot of the documentations along with this mitigation plan. So, um, I'll go ahead and read the Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two by header. Resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Holbrook, Navajo County, Arizona, adopting the twenty twenty-four Navajo County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Does anybody want me to read it in full? Thank you, so, so, please. I, it's too late. Vice Mayor Nielsen spoke already. Does anybody have any questions about this? Like I said, we had already, uh, voted on it before they submitted it to FEMA. FEMA has recommendations, they made those recommendation changes, and they're bringing it back to us for re-adoption. All right, um, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, adopting the twenty twenty-four Navajo County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll second it.
You have a second, Councilwoman Pack? Any discussion, questions? Hearing then, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Item number six, ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven, this is a second reading. Background and discussion is that on July ninth, Holbrook City Council had a public hearing on the primary property tax levying the final budget. Furthermore, on July ninth, council adopted the final budget, which included the primary property tax rate of point four five nine eight. So, like I said, this is our second reading, so I'll go ahead and read it by the heading. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven, an ordinance of the city of Holbrook, Arizona, levying a primary property tax upon the assessed valuation of the property located within the city, subject to taxation for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six. So this is already in our budget, it's approved. Like, this is just our second reading, just to kinda ratify everything. Does anybody have any questions or concerns, or discussion? Hearing then, we'll open the floor for a motion.
We approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing then, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Black?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nielsen?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes. All right, item seven, um. Actually, I needed to go back a little bit to go fast, and I apologize for not doing it on, after the resolutions of all the fees. Uh, Mitch Sullivan, can you remind the council and the citizens when these fees will go into, when they'll be implemented?
Uh, these are, all the resolutions passed today will be adopted thirty days from today, so it'll be September one.
September one, so, and that's part of the reason why we're doing a special meeting tonight, so we gotta.
And so will they get this information out to the citizens before that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll post this on our website. We've already posted a lot of the other information, um, but we'll get it out on our website, and they're always welcome to come in and to,
Can you edit my newspaper as well?
And get the information from.
The paper should be reporting on tonight, too, so.
Yeah, we will publish all the resolutions.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, they will be publishing the paper.
All right, so. All right, so sorry, not to digress, but I know that people wanna know when it's gonna go to, thank you.
September first.
All right, thank you. All right, item number seven, council member resignation, um.
Wood?
I'll pick Wood. All right, so, council member Tammy Wood has submitted her formal resignation from the Holbrook City, from the Holbrook City Council, and we do thank her for her service and her dedication to the community. Um, I'll read her resignation letter, which was dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, it says, dear Mayor Kathleen, council members and the people of Holbrook, it is with great sadness that because of an unforeseen family emergency, I have to resign. Thank you for letting me serve you in this capacity. I love this town so much, I wish I could stay. Sincerely, Tammy Church Wood. So. So she will be missed. We do appreciate her service, um, and all that she did for the citizens here. So, in accordance with the Holbrook City Charter, the council is now responsible for filling the vacant seat. Per section two point one two C of the charter, if a vacated seat has more than two years remaining in its term, which councilwoman does have more than two, the appointed council member shall serve until the next regular city election. At that time, the seat will be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term by election, with the ballot indicating it is a short term. So just to clarify, so we will ask for letters of intent, we'll go over that in just a second, too. That person that we appoint will serve until next December, but next July, when the next primary is, if that same person wants to fill the whole term, they would have to get on the ballot, but anybody else can jump on that ballot as well. So to continue here, it says, to begin the process, the city of Holbrook is currently accepting letters of interest from individuals who meet the qualifications outlined in the city charter. These are the qualifications. Must be a qualified elector of the city of Holbrook. Must have physically resided in the city of Holbrook for at least two years prior to appointment. Must reside within the city limits throughout the term of office. Must not be employed by the city of Holbrook or have been convicted of a felony or official misconduct. Letters of interest are due to the city clerk no later than noon on August sixth, twenty twenty-five, which is next Wednesday at six P M. That way, we can get it in the packets. The city council will review submissions and conduct interviews with qualified applicants during the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting, so at our next meeting, we will do that. Um, next steps, publicly announce the vacancy and call for letters of interest. Verify that all applicants meet the eligibility criteria outlined in the charter. Conduct interviews with qualified applicants at the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, and appoint a new council member to serve until the next regular election. Um, we are in a tight timeline. I've been working with, um, Lisa on this. There was, you couldn't do anything before fifteen days and nothing really passed thirty days, so this is why the timeline is what we have here tonight in front of us. So as a reminder, we are taking letters of interest from a new resident. They have, had to live here for two years. Submit your letter of interest to city hall.
By next Wednesday.
By August sixth. By next, yep, which is next Wednesday at noon.
Is that posted on, on our website or?
It will be after tonight.
It will be, so, tonight's a formal acceptance of the resignation, and, um, so we accept her resignation. We didn't have to do a vote, we checking in on that. Um, so next, so August sixth, we'll be there, but at the August thirteenth meeting, for anybody that had a letter of interest, we will be inviting them to come. As a council, we'll probably have like two standard questions that we'll ask everybody. We don't want it to go too long. We'll ask two questions to each candidate, and then at the end of the night, we will take a vote, um, and then, and we just did this, um, we know as well, this is how we got Terry the first time. Um, so anyways, does anybody have any questions about the process? Um, okay.
So we can go out and recruit people to, if they would be interested in, the things that are, type of thing.
Encourage, yeah. Yeah.